Last guy by the stand is Mr. Hines, Jr., please.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing from all sides. Thank you. May be seen.
Amen.
My angels were speaking. The first is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve this agenda?
Move to approve the agenda, sir.
I say.
Motion's been made with a second in discussion. All votes say aye?
Aye.
Aye, in your books. Motion carries. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Moving right along, we'll move to board comments. Have board comments.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate two of our football players at both of our high schools in Lee County. Grayson Hud at Lehigh and Zach Kidwell at Thomas Walker over the past several weeks. They've both been the Kingsport Times News five-star player of the game, Player of the Week. So, I want to congratulate them on that.
Thank you.
You can't comment on that.
I congratulate them as well.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate them as well. I'm real happy with the way the football program, the band, I think everything's really looking up and what we're wanting. So, and I'm glad you're all doing well. And your son, I'm sure he's glad he got moved out of quarterback into running back. He's a horse.
He's enjoying it. Anybody else? I've got several things, and I don't know if do this in comments, but there is no other place to do it other than in board comments. But first, Cameron Grebel, since you mentioned sports, Thomas Walker golf. Cameron Grebel was all district, so was Adam Collinsworth, he's an all district in golf. Cameron went on all region, Cameron went on the state and finished eighth at the state level. Congratulate him and Coach Bobby Stafford. I don't know if I can remember his name, but yes. Those and Elidale, Elidale Middle School received a Blue Ribbon Award. I think Mr. Kilgore, Delegate Kilgore will be down Wednesday along with former principals. We have one with us, Ms. Moody, and she was actually the principal there when the school was nominated. And congratulate them. It's one in three schools in this region, am I right, or one in three in the state?
One in three in the region. I think it was only seven in the state.
Okay. Pretty good accomplishment for that little school. And hopefully the paper will be there to praise them and all the employees. I talked to Mr. Sturgill about this, and there is no action I have placed for it on the agenda. But we've had some lunch situation in our county. A lot talked and a lot mentioned about it. I'll say this for District One, I've talked to the principals and a lot of the cooks down there. I don't think everybody's completely happy and in love with everything we've got lunch-wise. But in turn, I think they're happy with what's the portion size. I know there's been some complaints made throughout the county on social media. Some of them teachers, some of them other employees, and it's caused a pretty good ruckus. And for the most part, our superintendent's been busy for the last two weeks battling lunchroom problem and bathroom problem. We've got a lot more to do than that. But hopefully we can fix it and move on. Next thing that I want to mention, and it's not on the agenda, but we can't do this in board comments, and you want my way into the destruction of bathrooms at the high school level. It's happened at Lehigh and Thomas Walker both. I got a phone call Monday that every bathroom at Thomas Walker was locked. I don't think we can do that. I don't think we should do that. We all know what teenagers go through, especially females. And locking down every bathroom in the building is unacceptable to me. And I told Mr. Dean that there's ways of fixing things. If we can do something as a board, I'm willing, if you're caught destructing or destroying a bathroom or anything in it, you can get it to 365 days out. Your parent, your guardian can pay for everything that you tore up. And I'm willing to vote for it tonight or any other time. We've worked too hard to get where we are now. And I could care less what TikTok does. But we've got to help our principals, get our bathrooms open, in my opinion, and fix the problem. The problem's not every kid in the building. Any other board comments?
I agree with what you said, Mr. Sturgill. I got some calls today about the bathroom being locked, especially from the lady's standpoint.
Right.
The guys is kind of a little bit different, very different breed, I guess. But the ladies, they need bathroom. They need more than be able to go in five minutes, you know, or whatever, to the time or whatever it is. I believe we need to open our bathrooms up, whatever we need to do to secure them, we need to do it. Not with you. Whatever we need to do, let's get it done. And people destroy our stuff, and that's just whatever we can do to them, is send them home.
Well, in Wise County, what they're doing is what would happen to anybody else in the world. If you go out and destroy somebody's property, they call the police, and they come and arrest you, and you get charged. You go to court in front of the judge. That's what they're doing to the students in Wise County. Putting them on notice, that's just not acceptable. Heck, half of them are happy if we do suspend them. They don't want to be here anyway.
I don't. But we've got to do something. Principals can't follow a kid in the bathroom, obviously. But locking down the school lock at Fort Knox and the bathroom, I don't think's answering. It's just my opinion. If somebody's got a better idea, I'm all for it. I know principals is faced with this challenge just like everybody, but...
That sounds pretty good, yes, I think, you know.
I think you need the parents involved as well at the cost, and, you know, they're just as responsible too.
Of course, with order restitution, I'm sure.
Yes.
They would, Mike and I talked about that. And obviously, if it's a thousand dollars or greater, that's technically a penalty, one, two counts. So, I mean, that's pretty bad consequences.
So, can I ask the superintendent at the high school level or the principals in the high schools, call every kid in the gym and let them know this is what you're faced with if this happens? There's other challenges like slapping a teacher, right? Which would terrify me. I wouldn't do that at that age, but... At least the bathroom situation, this is what we're doing, this is why you got locked up, this is the consequence you can face.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. I think we probably do it at the middle school level, because I think they've been having some of the issues as well.
No, all call. I'm sick of all calls.
Right.
Every kid in the gym, face to face with a principal, they're going to go home and say something to their parents if this happened. I don't know. That's what I would do if I was in that situation.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And like what Mr. Hines said, I have told them that, you know, especially with the challenge of supposedly slapping a teacher, I said, if somebody gets slapped, I want them arrested, and I want them charged with assault.
Right.
I was thinking the same thing needs to happen, yes.
We've got resource officers at both schools.
Yes.
We've got female PE teachers at both schools, is that right?
Yes.
We can deal with this another way other than locking everything down, in my opinion.
But I can definitely give it to the principals and...
Us talking about it publicly as a board and agreeing, I think should would help. I hope it does. The lunchroom situation, in my opinion, again, I want to give that. We don't eat hungry kids, and I don't know that we got them or we do. I really don't. I know District One don't seem like nobody's hungry, but they may not like wheat biscuits, nor do I. But that's the world we live in. You've got options to vote in November. We can change it possibly. It changed a little a couple of years ago. We had an option of different things. Portion size, I don't think, has changed, is that right?
Now, portion size is the same, but I mean, they give us a minimum. We can go above it, and I have instructed everybody to make sure, and I think everybody doesn't want a child to go home hungry.
Right.
So, I've told them to feed the kids. We're good on our lunchroom fund, so, I mean, we did send out an alca that we were having to substitute things because of supply and demand, but you might not get a hamburger that day. You might get a chicken patty on bun or something, but we're feeding everybody, and I told them to make sure everybody got a good portion.
And there's not a food shortage either.
No, I mean, certain things we are not able to get with the supplier, they give us something different.
Right.
So, you're saying regardless of what we see on social media, regardless of who it's from, we have plenty of money, we have plenty of food, enough to feed everybody.
Yes.
It may not be exactly what they want.
Right.
Or what's planned for that day because we didn't eat it, but that's not the case. Nothing's short.
But the sudden's going to be substituted. If one item's not available, it's going to substitute something else.
Right.
And plus, with this picture that was going around on Facebook or whatever, I don't know if that kid didn't go through the line and tell the cook, I don't want fat and bad and bad. That might have been their personal choice that was on the plate. Maybe it wasn't. But I mean, I had pictures from Flatwood the same day, and it's a great-looking meal. So, I wouldn't worry about a shortage or anything, but people sure did let me know about it.
I got about five phone calls that day when that happened. People willing to call the church, don't eat food, wearing whatever. I'm like, what are you talking about? I have no clue. And there again. We all use social media, except Gary, but it's very powerful. We all know that.
Well, District Four, Dryden, they serve really good food, and there's been some pictures on the media. Plus, I have eaten there before, so they...
I already told Thomas Walker to talk. You know, obviously, they splurge, I'm sure.
Well, it always hurts their good.
At times, I'm sure every school could splurge. Let them sue us, or let them fine us, or write us up. I could care less. Nobody's going home hungry because of portion size, in my opinion. I think superintendent agrees.
I agree. Cameron, I won't ever get...
I agree too.
I agree too.
Full count.
Right. Can we not do what we used to do, what Lowell used to do at Jonesville? Is have soup beans and cornbread every day? If you wanted to eat that after you ate your meal, you could eat that.
I could check. Cornbread probably, unless it's like whole wheat cornbread or something.
We wouldn't want them to lack the food.
I understand. And like you said, we do have an offer, so usually there's at least five items offered. And some people will go through and maybe not take them all, so their lunch looks a little sparse. But I have talked to the principals, and I'll continue to talk to them and Mr. Welch, who's over the flood program, and make sure our kids are fed.
And Lehigh's also had a potato bar back when I was teaching, and they had that choice, and salads and things like that.
And I think I mentioned it maybe a couple of meetings ago. We did try to get a waiver to continue serving the white biscuits, and that was denied by the state. So, the only thing we can serve are the wheat biscuits. And like Mr. Kidwell said, I think you have to bury some of those in gravy just to...
Drown it, yes.
Who makes our menu?
Round out the times.
Who makes our menus up, Mr. Dean?
Mr. Welch works with cafeteria managers to make those up. There are certain requirements that have to be on them. And then I think certain days of the month, managers get to what they call manager specials. It might be stuff that they have in the freezer that they've got plenty of, that they need to, you know, get some of it out.
Yes, sir.
And they'll do that. But there are requirements that have to be on those menus. And he worked, Mr. Welch worked with cafeteria managers to make those.
The bathroom situation, I won't drag it out all night, but I know in the girls' bathroom, I heard there was a couple soap dispensers tore off the wall. And a toilet sink tore up. And in the boys' bathroom, we had a actual toilet ripped out of the floor. When that happens in a concrete floor, you have to go in, jackhammer the floor up, get to the PVC, get down and fix it. And it takes a lot of time, effort, money from the school system and the guys that works in the maintenance department, which could run into several thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, they've been spending a lot of time working the bathrooms. And we're trying to get our boilers and heat ready for winter. And I think they have been at schools almost every day, if not every day, doing at least some type of repair in a bathroom.
And I would about bet, you're talking five to six kids, maybe two or three, that's doing this.
Probably.
Not the whole school.
No, it's not the entire school. And, you know, any kid that has information that could help us in this would be beneficial for everybody. But it can get expensive with sinks and toilets and, you know, clogging up drains with various items that, you know, you spend hours trying to get it unclogged.
Mentioned the meetings at the high school with the principals. I'm not trying to tell them how to run the building, nor am I like anybody else. But does anybody board-wise have a problem with that? We got to let people know, we're letting the kids know, you're going to be held responsible.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think it should be an alca also. Parents, somebody can hear.
Right, but the problem, you can do that too.
Right, right.
The problem with alca, when you get so many of them, I could ignore on half of them. But...
I do them all.
It happens, and I'm not, it is aggravating, but it's necessary.
We can do both.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are there teachers on hall duty or bathroom duty like there used to be?
I know there, I mean, I haven't been at Thomas Walker as much. I know I was at Lehigh just the other day. They had a teacher of their own duty at the door taking temperatures. And I saw one down the hallway at the bathroom, so I think they did have somebody stationed there. High school teachers have planning and a duty period, so they should be, yes, that we can monitor things.
So, my question, Mike, are you suggesting that we don't lock any bathrooms?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a problem with locking some until we get the situation under control. I don't want it to just be one bathroom that's open for all the kids, but...
That's what we got.
Have some access throughout the building, but I don't care if we're just trying to control it right now to have some that are locked.
Right. The in-the-corner bathrooms, you're saying keep them locked, but the main hallway bathroom is always open and open?
Whatever works.
I think a lot of it's happening during class time.
Probably.
Because of the block, the timeframe of the block. And when teachers let them go to the bathroom, they have plenty of time to get in there and destruct the property.
You feel like there needs to be some that are locked, right?
I mean, I've been at different schools, and there are some bathrooms that are in areas, remote areas that are difficult to monitor. And I do think those need to be locked. If we can provide enough bathrooms elsewhere that we can monitor and keep clean and safe, that we don't need to open them all up if they're in remote areas that we can't monitor.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I see. You take care of it. And we can blame you if it goes wrong. That'll be fine.
And if we do have somebody smacking a teacher on TikTok challenge, that's another situation. Obviously, that's watch yours. If a kid, a child walks up and hits a teacher intentionally, watch the charge.
Something better.
That's up to whoever wrestles, correct?
Well...
I think it would be an arresting officer and then...
Then it comes back to the board, yeah.
And then obviously, from a school standpoint, it'd be student discipline.
Right.
For us.
But, you know, there'll be another crazy thing come up, so it needs to be...
Addressed.
Addressed, yes, too. TikTok stuff that's destructive will be punished.
I've addressed its minds. I'm threatening mine too with the prayer of the Lord, good Lord. Definitely, if you touch anything, and I have to pay for it, and you bring this mess, it's going to be ugly. That's what we do as parents. And I think, in my opinion, I think a lot of parents would fix it if they knew. Some of them can't, maybe some of them won't, but we got to try. Instead of locking down every bathroom in the building, I don't think that's necessary.
As a teacher, I'd like to request too that they don't have to wait 30 minutes to go to the bathroom out of class.
Yep, I can't wait that long.
Just to let them in one at a time or whatever the bathrooms. So, I mean, that's, I know you're saying to open it up. Because that'd be wonderful to get the kids back, you know, let them come back.
I'll give it. The principals get to work on it.
Any other board comment? Since I spoiled that for everybody. If not, we'll move to consent agenda, a motion on consent agenda.
I said move.
Motion's been made, and I'm going to say.
Second.
Any discussion? All votes say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next is reports to the board. Do we have any reports from the board? If not, we'll move right along to reports from the division superintendent, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, on enrollment, we ended September 28-12. Budget is based on 28-65, so we're still below that number. But with the carryover, we're good financially, and that number continues to creep up. So, I think we're going to be in good shape on enrollment. In your package, you've got Kingsport Times News drawing cards and the ride-on. This month, I'm glad to say that we've got a number of schools that are involved. Flatwoods, Dryden, Jonesville Middle, Elidale Middle, and Pennington Middle. So, if you get a chance, check those out. So, good number of students involved with that and the various drawing cards and the ride-on activities. Give you an update on the boiler and the roof projects. We are getting closer on getting boilers ready for winter. Should be within the next week finishing up the ones here at the vocational school. Probably two weeks, Lehigh. Dryden is virtually ready. They had to do some work on it. The issue we've run into is Pennington Middle. We talked to a couple of boiler companies. They thought they could fix those boilers until they took the covers off of them. They are beyond repair. I won't say they're beyond repair. You probably could repair them. They estimated $150,000. And you're going to have 60-year-old boilers that won't be completely rebuilt. Timeframe-wise, we're going to need to get a rental boiler at Pennington Middle to get through this winter. So, I'm working on getting that. And later in the agenda, we've got a recommendation to buy new boilers for Pennington Middle. Roof projects, it looks like probably be spring before we get the roof here, Fort Quillen and Lehigh. The roof restoration projects, which are at the A building of Vocational School, Rose Hill and Elkhorn. They said that they may be able to get those done by Christmas. So, if they can get their materials, which they think they can get, they should dive into it. They said if the weather cooperates, they may actually get done with that. And then later in the agenda, we're going to approve, or I hope you all approve, some bids for the roofs at Dryden, Flatwoods, and Thomas Walker.
The, at Rose Hill, there was somebody sort of ran the roof down there. Is that the solar panel people?
Yes. Operations update, you've got that in your package. If you've got any questions on that, like I said, we've been spending a lot of time working on bathrooms. I don't even know if they put it all in there. You can see unstoppable sewer. Probably all of those unstoppable sewers is stuff that was stuck down in a commode and clogged something up. Paper towels, shirts, I mean jackets that repairs the sinks and everything else. That's mainly damage that has been done. Transportation update, that is in there as well. I talked to Mr. Cave, and Miss Belcher had been working with him. I think they've done almost all of the routes in the new software. And we'll be looking to see if there's ways that we can improve the routes in the county and that we'll have them all on this program. Want to talk to you a minute. We're going to start developing the calendar for the 22-23 school year, which will be next school year. I know you all have mentioned the possibility of seeing if we could do the RAM clinic in October so we would have a break in October to kind of break up that month. I have mentioned that to the RAM people. They have not got back with me yet. But I wanted to see if there was anything else you all thought about on the calendar before I worked with the support staff and the teacher communication meeting to start the calendar development. And we can start working on that and give you an update next month. Several things going on this month. We had National School Bus Safety Week and School Bus Transportation Employees Appreciation Day this month by the governor. Bus drivers, I don't know how they do it. They have a tough job, and I appreciate everything they do. This year has been even worse, some with buses because of a number of people who have been quarantined. And it's, we have not missed a bus route this year, and I'm proud to say that. And we have got kids too in front of school, and a lot of places have had problems doing that. But I want to compliment our people on getting our kids too in front of school safe. Virginia Farm to School Week, we just had that. That shows students how items come from the farm, come to school, talking about lunches. They need to understand where our food comes from, because we've still got a lot of farmers in our area, and they need to be appreciative of those people and what they do to put food on the table. National Custodian Day was October the 2nd. Custodians like our bus drivers, we appreciate what they do and keep the buildings clean and safe. Wanted to say thank you to that group. October the 11th to the 15th, National School Lunch Week. We've been talking about lunches a whole lot, so National Lunch Week will make sure our kids get fed proper portions.
Be glad, so.
This is also Bullying Prevention Month, so... But school is not a place for bullying, no place is a place for bullying, but especially school. And, you know, we work with kids and everybody trying to prevent that. It's also Dyslexia Awareness Month. We have a number of students that have dyslexia, and we work with them. It's an issue that they have to live with, and we have to help them get through. October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know a lot of the teens sometimes wear pink socks and do different stuff for breast cancer awareness. Just wanted to make you aware of all of the activities and things that are going on in October. School audit, Ms. Belcher and I have a copy of the county audit and a copy of the audits for the schools, if any of you want to look at those. Just got a couple of things on the school division audit that we've got a recommendation on. And the schools, most of them got one item, which is separation of duty. It's kind of hard to separate duties, and especially the smaller schools when there's only one secretary that handles all of the money, you can't separate things. So, we usually get dinged on that. But we've got a copy of any of those that you want. They presented them last month at the Board of Supervisors meeting, but we've got a copy if any of you want to look at those. I think that's everything on my own. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I forgot, if I could go right back to the reports from the board that I was going to touch on, what I got from Ms. Christine. We did approve the solar panels and the roof stuff with it. But I just asked her about District One, the Rose Hill Elementary electric bill. One in one year, that's a year's worth with details here if you want to look at it, $50,544. That's at Rose Hill with electric bill only. Elidale was $34,678. Thomas Walker, $70,413 in electric bill in one year. That's a total of $155,000 just in District One for electric bills. I didn't know if you had that, but I had it, wanted to share it with you.
And I'm a building contractor. I've been working on some things, and she can tell me if I'm off on this number. But I think in the last several years, we've paid just Old Dominion somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 a year. And that doesn't include Pal Valley Electric, which we also buy electricity from. So, we spend a lot on electricity.
A ton. Any unfinished business? If not, we'll move to action and discussion items. The first is action item eight, staff absences due to COVID-19.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Hines broke us up at the last board meeting, and I have talked to a lot of people. I'm making a recommendation that we give a one-time to our staff, five days, where they don't have to take sick days or their vacation days if they are quarantined or if they had a positive diagnosis this school year of COVID-19. We can back up if anybody's had it since the start of school, give them those days back, or if they have it the rest of the school year to try to help some of our employees out.
Mr. Dean, I think several of us prefer eight days.
Okay.
You're involved with that? I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion now? I'll make a motion to give them eight days.
I'll second.
Motion's been made with a second in discussion. Obviously, I'll say this, I got COVID about two and a half weeks ago, three, something like that. This is about a week after the last meeting. My mother tested positive. I went over and checked on her, and then my sister just tested positive. Didn't get close to her. I was probably from here to you from her. But about three days later, I tested positive. And I got paid for it. I was off 10, 11 days, something like that. I got paid to be off. My sister got paid to be off. I think it's only fair that we pay people to be off. I'm not one of the views, and we all know we can be. I don't, what are we going to do? How are we going to work it? That's the question I got.
Well, if I could, could we say that if they bring us a positive diagnosis or if the school...
Okay, I went to Walmart and bought one that you tested from home when I was positive. Then I went to the doctor and got the infusion. But there's a, you can get, I could screenshot that positive. If it's anything to Nancy, she'd say, hey, I'm positive. Is it a doctor's note saying you're positive? Is it a doctor's note saying you're positive, and we're gonna pay you?
I, I, I would like it, because I, I just like we have proof.
Prefer being the doctor's.
Yes, yes. Unless we send them home for quarantine, I mean, we know who we send home.
Walgreens does it for free. I don't know how to handle it. I just know this past March, or when this stuff first started, it was abused heavily, and they got paid. And we had to spend tons and tons of money for everybody to go to Dollywood, or not everybody, but a lot of people to go to Dollywood, or to the beach, and it's gonna get abused at some point if we don't have some structure to it, in my opinion.
I would like a doctor's excuse, or we quarantine them. I mean, that's just my opinion, because I don't want it abused. I'm trying, we're trying to take care of our employees.
Right.
And, and do what's right. I just don't want them to abuse it, and I think we need something to show...
Just let them know there's criteria, and we're not gonna be dinged. Everybody treat the same.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I am negative, by the way, with tests. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is B, calendar update, fiscal year twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I have talked to all the principals, and I have actually talked to a teacher at every school. This year is different than last year. We've not closed school. I'm not planning on recommending that we close school. But we have, at one day, we probably had at least five hundred kids at home in quarantine. So teachers are dealing with different things, and they are, some of them are at our wits end, trying to take care of who shows up, who gets quarantined. Quarantine changes every day. It has gotten better. We've only sent out a few notices this week, but I'm recommending that we do early dismissals on Wednesday, and the reason, a couple of reasons I chose Wednesday. Anytime we do an early dismissal on Friday, student attendance is awful. I don't know that a Wednesday will make it better, I, I think it will. I think we've got a couple of teachers here tonight, and they can chime in, but I'm proposing that we dismiss a half a day, two Wednesdays in October, two Wednesdays in November, and two Wednesdays in December, to give teachers more time to plan and take care of these kids. They will be expected to stay till the end of the day, but the kids will go home at lunch after we feed them, and give them more time to work with those students. So I'm recommending those dates, it's on your agenda, and not, no, they are Wednesdays.
You're saying that kids go home, but the teachers stay and work?
Kids go home at lunch, after we feed them, and then the teachers stay and work till the end of the day to do planning, you know, if they've got certain kids that they need to do stuff with, they could probably call them, video conference them. So, that's my recommendation.
I think it's a good break for them, for their mental health as well.
I'm good, I'm good with the recommendation.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, I prefer Friday myself, I've got my reasons for that, but whatever you all think.
I, I'm just worried about the attendance, because I know how Fridays are. And it may happen on Wednesday, I can't say that it won't, but...
Your reasons, sir.
I mean, we may end up doing this again in the spring, if Wednesday doesn't help, and I, I wouldn't have an issue going back to Friday, but we have attendance issues anyway, and I don't wanna try to add to it. And the teachers I talked to, probably fifty-fifty Friday, Wednesday, but all of them said we would greatly appreciate something.
A motion on the recommended for calendar update, twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we have early dismissal on Wednesdays, two weeks in October, two weeks in November, and two weeks in December, and that the students be dismissed, the teachers will be there for planning and whatever.
Motion's been made, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is C, action of any to request bids for roof replacement at St. Charles Elementary.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working with Miss Belcher with our, and Miss Willis with our Esser money. We are pretty sure we've got enough in our Esser funds to replace the roof at St. Charles Elementary. That roof is beyond restoration, like, it can't be restored the way we're doing others. It needs to be complete tear-off and replaced, so we're asking for permission to send out for bids on that roof replacement.
I'll speak with that.
St. Charles.
That's you, Mr. Williams, we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion's been made, I'll say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is D, action of any to award contract related to request for proposals for bowler replacement at Pennington Middle School to Bowler Supply.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a letter from Miss Belcher. She and Mr. Simpson and Miss Wells reviewed the two bids that we received. gave a consensus of that committee to approve Bowler Supply to replace those bowlers in the amount of five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars.
I was looking for the disciplinary meeting, I suppose I have my phone here.
Is this the one that was said that was out, backed up twenty-six weeks?
Yeah, they, even if we approve it tonight, and I call them tonight and tell them that they're good to go, they told me it'd be somewhere between twenty and twenty-six weeks before we would get a new bowler. So that's why I said we're gonna need a rental to get us through the winter.
Right.
But it could be up to twenty-six weeks to get a new one.
You got any idea about a rental, the price of it?
Eighty-five hundred dollars a month. Probably fifteen thousand dollars to have it delivered, installed, removed, and shipped back.
And you'll probably stand in line and get one.
I've got one on hold. We're trying, so, we'll take care of it.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion on action item D?
Motion.
Motion's been made, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is act, action of any to award contract related to a roof replacement, phase two at Thomas Walker High School, to ABG caulking and waterproofing. What is phase two of that?
What?
Phase two, what, what were you adding?
You know, we didn't do the complete roof at Thomas Walker when we replaced. This would be the second phase to finish the roof at Thomas Walker. We had three companies that bid on it. Consensus of the committee, it's two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and four dollars, ABG caulking and roofing. They have until the end of next calendar year to finish that, because they said they will be lucky if they get their materials by next summer. Ask that that be approved, so we can award that contract and get on the list.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is F, action of any to award contract related to roof replacement, phase two, Flatwoods Elementary School, caulking and waterproofing, A, ABG, I'm sorry.
Same on Flatwoods, when we did it before, we did not replace the entire roof, this would finish, Flatwoods, uh...
It's B building, right?
Mainly B building and the metal on A building.
Okay.
Because the metal was not the, the arch part of the gym.
Okay.
So, I'm just trying, while we've got this Esser money, to finish those roofs, because it's gonna be hard enough to keep up with when roofs are replaced, but if we have them in different stages, it's probably gonna be worse, so recommendation to approve that phase at Flatwoods.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is G, action of any to award contract related to roof replacement, phase two at Dryden Elementary School, to ABG caulking and waterproofing.
The same at Dryden, with the exception of the new part, because that's relatively still a new roof. I don't think it's good economically to work on the part that still has some life left in it. This would be the metal part at Dryden, the new gym, and some areas in between there that wasn't done the first time we did the roof at Dryden.
So basically, this coming summer, late fall, we should have roof, roof repairs for solar panels and a lot of replacements being finished up for about every school in the county, or those two.
Most schools, I think Miss Belcher and I talked about it, Dry, uh, Pennington got a roof, Miss Belcher helped me here, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen school year?
Fourteen, fifteen, yeah.
When they had the hailstorm come through, Pennington got a roof, so they're good for a while. This would just leave mainly Elidale, and I'm talking with the solar people about the possibility of that roof being restored.
Right.
So, yes, hopefully, when we get finished, we'll have good, solid roofs on all of our buildings and go from there.
Motion on action item G.
I'll submit.
Motion's been made, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, that's Mr. Heinz, she will read us in closed session.
Moving, going to closed session, discuss personnel under Code of Virginia, Section two point two dash three seven one one, subsection A one, opinion threat litigation under Virginia Code, Section two point two, dash three seven one one, subsection A seven, and I guess that is all of it.
Motion's been made for closed session, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in closed session, thank you.